All right, we're ready to get started. When we get started here, I've asked the council's asked Brother Donnie Emerson from the Russell Springs Christian Church to lead us in prayer and then after that, we'll remain standing and have the pledge allegiance and Larry's done the pledge allegiance for us forever and this is gonna be his last time so I think he can get through it. So would you stand with us as we open this fire?
Heavenly Father, we just want to bless the name of Jesus and we thank you Father for the city of Russell Springs. We thank you for our city council, our mayor, the leadership of this city. We want to ask you to give them wisdom to make the right decisions on everything that they look at this evening and everything they consider. We ask that your hand be upon it and your blessing be upon it. And Lord, I want to ask you to bless every person who is in this room and their families and we thank you for each of them. And Lord, let each of us understand that Jesus died on the cross for us because you love us and we thank you for that. Thank you for calling us to yourself with your Holy Spirit. God bless us now as we proceed in this meeting in Jesus' name, amen.
If you are a veteran, I would ask you to render the hand salute please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Thank you, Donnie. Ladies and gentlemen, to reject your own. Call the Russell Springs regular call city council waiting to order. Chris, let me see if we got a phone.
Ms. Daniel. Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Blakey.
Here.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Holt.
Here.
Mr. Skaggs.
Here.
Mayor Jeff Quong.
All right, first thing on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes Chris has sent him. I'll tell you, you've had a copy of them and hope you looked through them. Have we got any questions about the minutes? Any additions or subtractions? We don't have like a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you, Dave. You need a second? Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries, sir.
The next thing on the agenda is acceptance of the cash disbursements or the financial statements in order to pay the bills. Same thing, you've had them in your packet and looked them over. I hope, do we have any questions at all on the bills?
Here, I'd like to make a motion we pay the bills.
Thank you, Tommy. Need a second?
I said, sir.
Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We don't have nothing on old businesses this time unless the council's got anything. Has anybody got anything on old business we didn't discuss? Okay, then we'll go directly into new business. The first thing on the new business is the fire department award, I think. Fire Department's here and they've got an award to present to somebody so Bobby, if you and Mark and Kevin will come forward and.
At this time, we was fortunate enough by the city of Russell Springs, the council, the mayor to purchase a new set of Jaws of Life from Russell Springs. That's the first new set we've had in 20 years. We was also fortunate enough to buy some rescue jacks for extrication. And this plaque, we want to dedicate this to Michael Grimsley for bringing us cars to our fire station and letting us practice using this equipment to make us better when them times come. And I'd like to present this to Michael Grimsley.
Come on up. Come on up there, Michael.
We can do the tattoo, brother. We appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you very much. Appreciate you.
Yeah, get a picture, guys.
Get his picture. Get your picture. Michael, I just want to thank you personally, the mayor, for what you do for the city. And I know you did it bringing four cars, two early and two later on and that's a big benefit to us. So for the city of Russell Springs, we started making challenge coins and we've got 50 of these and this is the first one that we've got right here. This is the very first one that's come out of the box and I want to make sure to let you know that we thank you, we're welcome. Here's your holder to set it on and we desk and we just want to let you know we appreciate you. And that's the first one we give up so the next 50s, 49 is behind you, okay? Thank you, fire department. Appreciate you. The next thing on the agenda is we've got an award and it's appreciation award. And we're gonna let the outgoing, or let the incoming magistrate present this to the outgoing magistrate. So Larry, if you'll come forward, we appreciate you for what you do and what you've done for the city. And Larry wanted to present that to you so.
Mr. Holt. Eagle flag. On behalf of the city council and the mayor of Russell Springs, thank you for a job well done, sir. I have big shoes to build. I know that.
Well, I don't know about the shoe size, sir. I've been at this awhile. I'm sure you're gonna do a great job. People of Russell Springs have been good to me as far as they've kept me in. First time I swore in here was in 1999. Been here awhile. And a great part of the district is the city. We've all worked, this is our home, so that's what we need to do. And then we thank you all for this. Larry, I got something for you too. We got, we got, we're gonna give you one of the challenge coins too. We just got them in. Whoody ordered these and designed them for us and we're taking the debt to have them and you get the sack when it come out of the box. That's the little holder to set it in, so appreciate you and all you've done. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is service, another service award and it's gonna, I hope I can get through this. This is, Larry, come on up here, Larry Skaggs. This is Larry's last meeting and he will be going to take Larry's place and Larry, I'm gonna miss you. I tell you what, me and him had some butted heads early and we talked and got everything straightened out and I know why he done what he done. He know what I done and what I done and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with Larry over the last four years. And I tell you what, if I need anything going forward, even though he's with the county, I'm gonna call him. Because one thing about Larry Skaggs, when he tells you something, he's not gonna back up. And when he comes and he gonna vote here and he tells us how he's gonna vote, when he comes in the door, that's how he votes. That's one thing about him, he's a man of his word and we appreciate Larry and I'm gonna miss you, I'll tell you that. You can come back and run before.
Four more years.
But we want to give you an eagle award too and just tell you we appreciate you. And we love you too, friend. You're a friend. We appreciate you. If you've got a few words you want to say?
I want to say, first of all, to the people that trusted me to be here, I took it serious because you didn't have to put me in that seat right there, but you did. And I hope I didn't let you down. I'm sure I made mistakes along the way as everybody does, we're human. But I have come to love these people that I work with, the council, the mayor, and they mean a lot to me. And I still continue to do everything I can to help in any way. Thank you, mayor.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you, Larry. Love you, brother.
You too, my man.
The next thing on the agenda is the Christmas parade awards and Chris is gonna help me with them here. Who's the first? Best small float vehicle at the parade. We appreciate you and we hope you come back next year.
I've been trying for three years.
But hey, here's you even some money. The city of Russell Springs even give you some money, see? We usually want your money, but hey. We appreciate you. Thank you. This next, and here goes to Bella Music, best youth entry. And if y'all will come forward, ladies, and I know Ms. Yvonne's proud of y'all, taken to y'all. Y'all done a great job down in Jamestown too other night at the, at the Christmas tree lighting. So here's you. Look at Wade there. Yvonne, here's the money.
Oh, thank you.
Are you kidding it?
I don't know.
But thank you all. Appreciate you all, young ladies. This goes to that nice Cadillac DeVille, don't it, Robbie? I asked him if he drove it up there tonight. It's 68 Cadillac DeVille. He said, no, it was raining. So it rained and he couldn't drive it. So Robbie, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate you all.
And hope you come back next year.
Guarantee it.
You're welcome. Get in at any time. Appreciate you. Timmy Hudson said you take one of them. Superior battery. Well, now they're coming, he's, Mr. Flatt's coming up here and I said you can't win it two years in a row and he did, didn't he?
Well, different category.
Okay. But we appreciate you all. I want to thank you.
You enjoy it.
And I hope you come back next year.
I sure will.
I appreciate you.
Riders, I mean, or that.
No, riders. And that ain't here for riders, no main issue. We'll have to get her that one.
This is the big one?
This is the grand champion. West 80 Church of God. And they have the, this is the best overall for the parade this year. And we want to thank you. You're all in it every year anyway. We appreciate you all and thank you. I just did right there, y'all, that you can be excused if you all leave the wanted.
Will you go above it? I can't make a beeline that.
Yeah, he's young. You had to call him, he would've.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike. All right, the next thing on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance 2022-06. It's an ordinance of intent to annex property, property owned by Timmy Abernathy and Keith Owens. And you're gonna read that for us today?
The Commonwealth of Kentucky City of Russell Springs ordinance number 2023-06 and ordinance of intent to annex private property owned by Timothy Abernathy and Keith Owens. Be it ordained by the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky as follows. Whereas the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky has determined that the area here and after depicted and described is desirable for and intended to be annexed, the same being in an unincorporated area accurately depicted on the annexation map prepared by Kentucky license surveyor dated June 3, 2021, the annexation map which is attached and incorporated here in today. Whereas the property intended to be annexed is adjacent and/or contiguous to the pre-existing boundaries of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky as established by ordinance 13 and ordinance 8B. Whereas exhibit B is attached here to and incorporated by reference is an accurate meets and bounds description of the property depicted in the annexation map. Whereas the matter is before the city, the city council of the city of Russell Springs pursuant to the irrevocable request by Timothy Abernathy and Keith Owens here and after described in exhibit B to be annexed in the corporate city limits of the city of Russell Springs, Kentucky. The irrevocable request is attached here to and incorporated as exhibit C. Whereas Abernathy and Owens have represented that they are the principal owners of the property to be annexed as is indicated by the records of the Russell County Property Valuation Administrator and a recorded vesting deed. Whereas the city council in compliance with Kentucky revised statutes 81A.410 parent 1, parent B finds the entire territory to be annexed by reason of population density, commercial, industrial, institutional, or governmental use of land or subdivision of land is urban in character or suitable for the development of urban purposes without unreasonable delay. Whereas the city council based on the annexation map and other government records finds no part of the territory to be annexed to be in the agricultural district as devised by, as defined by Kentucky revised statutes 262.850. Whereas the city council based on documents and correspondence of record finds the territory proposed to be annexed has access to the service of utilities including city water and wastewater. Whereas the city council based on aerial photographs of record finds there are numerous residential homes and divisions along Kentucky Highway number 1870, which is Old Columbia Road, which are now in the vicinity of the territory to be annexed, thus evidencing urban character of development in the vicinity. Whereas the city council is aware that Abernathy and Owens' property proposed for annexations and joins the Platted Clear Lake subdivision, Black Cabined 1, Slide 43, incorporated by reference, which evidences that the vicinity is urban in character. Whereas the city council is based, whereas the city council based on the annexation map and photographic evidence of records finds the Abernathy and Owens parcel joins and is contiguous to Kentucky number highway 1870, the Old Columbia Road. Whereas the city council based on the annexation map and photographic evidence of record finds there are commercial businesses operating on the properties in the vicinity of the area to be annexed. Whereas the city council further finds that all foregoing adjudicated facts supporting the annexation of the subject territory being in compliance with Kentucky revised statutes 81A.410 parent 1 being urban in character or suitable for urban development purposes without reasonable delay. Whereas the city council is aware no evidence to indicate utility infrastructure owned by another city is in the territory proposed by annexation. Whereas Abernathy, whereas the Abernathy and Owens property is not in any other boundary of any incorporated city. Whereas all of the findings are keeping with Kentucky revised statutes 81A.410 and 81A.412 and all of the Kentucky happened to block. Now for be ordained by the city of Russell Springs as follows. Abernathy and Owens as owners of the property depicted in the annexation map shall receive notice in compliance with KRS with Kentucky revised statutes 81A.425. However, such notices of courtesy in that such property owners have provided an irrevocable consent to annexation as attached here to as exhibit C and thus no further notice is required as expressly recognized in Kentucky revised statute 81A.425 parent 5. The property intended to be annexed by the city of Russell Springs is depicted on the annexation map attached to and incorporated as exhibit A and more particularly described and attached to incorporated as exhibit B and it meets and bounds format. The intent to annex the ordinance shall become effective upon publication. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby removed. It will be a first reading today, a second reading in publication. Votes in favor, votes opposed. Signature line Eddie Thompson, mayor. And attest Christopher Ramsey, city clerk. And then our three exhibits, annexation map, meets and bounds description, and irrevocable consent.
That will be the first reading of the annexation of the property. The next meeting we'll have the second reading and we'll have discussion on it if we got any. So the next thing on the agenda is, I'm gonna jump here for the next thing. John, do you want to stand and come up here at the podium? We appreciate you, my friend.
Well, thank you for having me down. So my name's John Gotch. I'm the proprietor of Pizza Man. If you're not familiar with who we are, we run a few pizza shops around the country and we had a pizza shop down at Jamestown Marina for a summer there and things didn't quite work out for us lease wise. So we decided to open up a to-go shop here in Russell Springs. We're at the old Chop Shop building, little Chop Shop building. We've been open about four weeks now. Hours are 11 to 8 every day except Sundays. We'll extend those hours from summertime or springtime. We'll extend those hours a little bit. We offer full delivery to pretty much anybody that's called so far. So we're pretty flexible when it comes to that. We also run a full catering service as well so we can cater anything from a small birthday party up to large corporate events and things like that. I met with Jeremy and Mayor Thomas and they invited me to come down and introduce myself and I appreciate you guys doing that. We've had great support from the community since we started. I get stopped, I've been stopped every day for the past year saying, when are we gonna get some pizza here? Well, we got it. We're ready. I brought pizza with me tonight. I'm glad half of those people left, to be honest with you, because I wasn't expecting all this. But there are a couple of pizzas back here that I'm gonna leave for everybody to give a try, but I apologize. I should've probably brought a lot more pizza with me. But if you get a chance, stop down, say hello. We got a great team. My family works there. And I got people that have worked for me at other shops that are there as well. So we have a great staff, good crew, very friendly and I'm always available. So if you guys, if you come to our shop and you don't feel that you got the service or what you're expecting, we're 100% feedback company. We don't take anything personal. We want to make it better. We want to do it right. And to the point where we don't charge if it's not done right and it's just as simple as that. And we're looking forward to being here a long time. I've been here two years now. My family's here. My wife Kelly's a nurse in this, in this area as well. So we've integrated pretty well into the community and we look forward to continuing to do that. So we appreciate all your time and your support getting us up and going.
Any of you council got any questions for John?
Got a comment. It's delicious.
Thank you.
Garlic nods. Oh, my God.
Yeah.
Just to let everybody know, it's not only a pizza. He's got subs and wings, the best wings you've probably ever ate, chicken wings. And I've been down there seven times and ate, so try him out. I guarantee you, you'll go back. I did.
Yeah, one of the differences between us and most pizza shops I've found within 50 miles of here is it's all fresh. It's, we make everything from scratch. Our dough's from scratch. Our sauces are all from scratch, all the way down to our wing sauces. We make them all from scratch. Only meatballs, all from scratch. It's tough to do that in today's world because getting fresh food is not a cheap option for us. Our portions are really strong and you can probably feed multiple people off of one portion of salad even. I mean, if we, so we're not stingy with the portions and we're certainly not as cheap as some of the chains are. We're not gonna, we're not gonna compete with those guys because we're not offering those type of products. So we look forward to meeting you and we look forward to servicing you. Our end game here in Russell Springs is to start up another full-service restaurant here. We're talking to the city about a couple of options along the, along the parkway here and hopefully we'll be able to get to that point and have a full service, for a full service local here within, hopefully within the next year is the goal. So we'll, we'll keep the Chop Shop going. It's, it's easy enough, right? It's a to-go shop, so we'll keep that moving. But we look forward to continuing to grow our business here is the goal, so.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate you, John.
Where would you like me to leave the goods?
That'll be good right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you.
I'm gonna leave a couple of menus as well if anybody wants. I'll leave them on this back table here.
Great, thanks.
Want to turn to eat?
I'll keep out.
How'd that smell, John?
Smells really good.
The next thing on the agenda is the executive session under KRS 61.810. Next acquisition or sale of real property. And any motion?
I make a motion that we go into executive session under KRS 61.810, 1B for the purpose or sale of real property by a public agency when publicly published deed would likely affect the value of the property.
We got a motion. Need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, got any questions, any discussion on it? If not, Chris, I'll need a roll call in time, please.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Motion carries and it is 6:27.
You're entering the executive?
Executive session under KRS 61.810, 1B for the purchase or sale of real property by a public agency with a publicity would likely affect the value of the property.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tim. Roll call, Chris.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries and we're out of executive session at 6:53.
Six what?
53.
6:53. We're at a executive session. We didn't take no action in executive session. We could not take any action, so we are at a executive session at 6:53.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we give you, what was it, bargaining power or negotiation power to take care of the purchase or sale of real estate property we're talking about. I second that.
Thanks, Tommy. Got a first, second permission right of roll call, Chris?
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Skaggs.
Yes.
Mr. Blakey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Five, zero. Alrighty, thank you, Chris. Thank you, council. The next thing on the agenda is economic development update and Jeremy, since you're a grandpa, I don't know if y'all know it or not, Jeremy's a grandpa.
Yes, he is.
I'm sure he's got pictures you've showed.
I got a picture.
Thought he'd have one.
Yeah, I've got a few, Larry. I'll jump in. I really don't, Mr. Gotch was going to be making on a cup date and he just went ahead and done his little, his presentation a little bit early there. That's all I've got for you, mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. I got the police report for.
I read it. I read it while you were back there, so. We had a pretty uneventful month last month. We had 35 traffic stops, four DUIs, 42 collisions, and 14 criminal cases.
Everything going good this week?
Yes.
Good, okay. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you. Appreciate the police department for what they do for the city. Before I get to the mayor's update, anybody got anything on? Before I get to the mayor's update, anybody got anything on the council?
The lights are a big hit out in the public.
Yeah.
Many, many, many comment. And the parade as well.
That's the first thing on here, Tommy. The first thing I got is I want to thank Donnie Emerson, Jason Davis, and Mike Scales and Amber Re-Earn. And the parade, they were, and the parade judges, Marissa Ramsey. All city workers and volunteers. It was a successful parade and if you wasn't here and, and seen it. It was, it was a big parade and we're looking forward to next year. And Chris, we ain't got the check to give food for the needy tonight, have we?
They're coming tomorrow for it.
Okay, they're coming tomorrow. Y'all coming tomorrow. So just to let the council know and the public know. We raised one thousand seventy-five dollars to give the food for the needy for the radio station. So that, that's, that number's bigger than the one we gave last year, ain't it?
It is.
That's what I thought, so. It just seems like it's getting a little bit bigger as we go. It's growing. The next thing is, and y'all write these dates down, January the twenty-fifth and January the twenty-seventh. Is the city officials academy. Chris needs to know this week if you're going. We done got some rooms. We've probably got more rooms than we need. That's why we need to know. And council, if you can go, please go. I need you to go. If you can go. Two years ago and, and it was a good time. We all learned a lot. We got to eat together, fellowship together. We got a lot of stuff accomplished, so. If you can go, take your wife if she wants to go. It's just a good time for all of us. We will not leave a day early. We'll leave on the twenty-fifth that morning and come back on the twenty-seventh that afternoon, so we're only gonna be gone two nights, so. Ricky and Sherri, if you, she'll go with you. We'd like to have everybody go if we could. Cody's going. He's done told us he's going, so. Timmy, if you can go or get away a day or so, we appreciate it. David, you too. We get with Chris because we gotta get our information in. If we're going to get the new KRS books and stuff, we gotta have all our information in. Next thing's the Christmas lights. You're exactly right, Tommy. Larry, you called me the first night or two and Tommy, I appreciate you all about that. But you know, if anybody asks you, it ain't about us. It's about the employees. Employees done that. You know, I have people thanking me constantly. It's not about us. It's about the employees, how they done it. And it's free to the public. I mean, I sat in a meeting somewhere this week and they're mad at us at Burnside because we're doing ours free. And now they're saying that they ain't got as big a group as, or big as, as they had last year. And they bought more money, spent more money, and they're aggravated at us, so evidently it's going really good, so I'm proud of that. Then the next thing is what David's gonna do. December seventeenth at nine o'clock on Saturday, you gonna run in the five K, David? We're gonna have a five K. I want to thank Chris Coffey and Krista Weddington for coordinating that event. And if you, if anybody would be interested in running in it or walking in it, get with Chris because we gotta have, I believe, when is the last day? Tomorrow?
Uh, actually, it's today.
Today.
Pre-registration.
Pre-registration for a tee-shirt and a guarantee, but if you want to get in after that, you know, we probably got some shirts, so. We're excited about that. Then the next thing is, has anybody been over and seen the fire department?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, it's awesome looking. They're probably about sixty to eighty, probably sixty to seventy percent finished with it. And if you ain't seen it, you need to drive by and look at it. And they're proud of it, I'm telling you.
And that new equipment is nice.
Yeah, it's great. And thank you, Jeremy, for coordinating for us. It seemed like they're doing really well. And the next thing, I've got a couple of appointments to make. The Lake Cumberland Natural Gas Authority appointment. I'm gonna reappoint John Stivers for three more years. And then the Russell County PVA appointment, Jimmy Edmonds. I'm gonna appoint him for three years. That's a new appointment for him. And then the next thing is congratulations. I don't know if y'all know it or not, but they started a new thing at the fire department this year. They're giving a fireman of the year award and it's the first time they ever done that. And I, and I want to congratulate Brian Hootie Stevens. He won it this year. It's well deserved. And it was, it was awesome to go over there Monday or Tuesday night, whatever night it was. They had their Christmas dinner. And, and just go over there and see the guys and talk to them and, and let them give Hootie the award. It was, it was pretty awesome. And, and you know, if you see our fire department, thank them because they don't make no money. It's volunteer. And they do a lot of stuff for this community and, you know, I, I'm proud of the fire department as well as the police department, especially the utility workers. They've been, they've been awesome and Larry, we're sure gonna miss you. I tell you what, we are gonna miss you. And, and you know, Larry's been a big part of what we've got going here and this administration's done a lot. We built a new police station. Built a new fire department. We've done a lot. And you've been a part of that. And I appreciate it. The veterans memorial, just let y'all know. I didn't have it on the update. I met with the three, uh. Funeral home coordinators this morning. All three of them came in and they didn't fight. And they wasn't trying to stab one of us or nothing, so it's a good meeting. And we met with them, me and Brian. We got everything lined out for the veteran cemetery, who's gonna do what and everything, so they were excited about it. And it was a great meeting, so that's just another thing we've done, you know, with this administration. Veteran cemetery, I've had a lot of people thank us on that.
Eddie, I wanted to ask you something about that. Have they got any kind of a, a stone or anything for the veterans?
Yeah, what you'll do, if you're, if you've been a veteran and you pass away. The, the funeral home will work with Hootie and Hootie will order all the stones. Every one of them will be either granite or marble. They'll look just alike. They'll all be white. And they'll all be the regular military stone. That's all that'll be in that section. And, and it don't cost you for that stone. Hootie can order. And they said it'd take six to eight weeks to get it, so it's gonna take a little while to get it. But we've done, one of the funeral directors this morning said that he's done had somebody contacted him.
They, they will need an honorable discharge, Tim. That's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's not something Eddie made up or anything. It's, because some veterans don't have an honorable discharge. They have a discharge, but it's under a general condition or something, you know?
What I was talking about was, like, I don't know what you'd even call it, like a.
Like a memorial?
Yeah, with, with all of them's, or is that gonna just be?
Oh, you're talking about.
Put on the wall?
There's one on the wall that the mayor's put there. Is that the plaque you're talking about?
Yeah, but I was talking about like on a, a stone up there, like where the fence. Yeah.
Oh, saying what it is.
Like a memorial. No, like. Memorial on the wall. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, just like a stone saying, this is the Russell County Veterans Cemetery.
That'd be left up to the city of Russell Springs to do that.
Yeah.
I'll get with Hootie and see if we can't do something like that.
That would be nice, Tim. That would be really nice.
I'll get with Hootie and see if we can't do something.
We have to do something and take donations on it or something.
I've been asked this. I've got a question about it. What about a spouse? If you're.
Yeah, it's double stack, but now if you die first, if the spouse dies first, you have to buy the stone.
Okay, but they both can be buried in there.
They both can be double stacked.
Out somebody.
It's just like, I was saying a minute ago, one of the funeral directors this, this morning said he had done been contacted by a veteran. His wife has passed away and buried. And he wants to know if, if she can be buried with him. And we said, absolutely. He said, well, if I go ahead and make the arrangements now with you, will you, can we dig her up when I pass away? And get the stone and bury her with me? And the funeral director said, absolutely. He said, it's your cause. But he said, and I guess he's trying to save money. He said, well, I'm gonna wait till I pass away first. And then we'll get the stone in because that way they can go ahead and have the stone, the granite fixed on the front. Because the wife goes on the back and the veteran goes on the front, right, Larry?
Yes, sir.
And so that's how they're doing it. And, and I let Hootie take it and run with it because I met with, uh. Don't wanna bust stuff on Hootie here. I met with, help me, Chris. Frank Irvin. I met with Frank Irvin this week, or last week. We're gonna take over all the banners here in the city of Russell Springs. So just Main Street, our banners, we're gonna take care of them. And if, if they want a banner, they gotta go through City Hall. He's out because he's just, it's too much trouble. Have he bring two or three up here and down then? He'd say, gotta have these up by a certain time. So we're gonna have an enrollment period and we'll talk about that moving forward. That we end probably the last of February where we can have them up by Memorial Day. And then we won't put none up through the year. We'll just still maintain. But the thing I like about this is the D, what is it called, Larry? DD?
DD two-four-ten.
Yeah, so if, if, and that's what we met with the funeral directors this morning. Hootie will have them. If you've got a banner, he'll have them. So the funeral director said that saves them a whole lot of trouble. So they can go through Hootie and get them now.
Absolutely. Speeds up the process.
Right, so it, it's, it's, it's gonna be good. It is. And we're, we know we're moving forward. And this administration's done a, done a lot. And I appreciate y'all for that a whole lot. And with that, Merry Christmas to each one of you. Merry Christmas to everybody, you know.
I want to say for the last time, guys, it's been an honor to work with you. Overall, it's been good. There's been times like anything else that you go to do that I would dread coming here. But, but overall, I look back and I see the progress that I have got to be part of working in conjunction with y'all. Appreciate each one of you. We'll do anything I can to help you. Want you to know that. Love you, guys.
Well, since this is your last meeting. We got to party. Look, look how pretty y'all are. Look here.
The things you see, you ain't gotta go, guys.
And here, here, here's your little.
Name tag.
That, that for a while, so you can take that with you.
Thank you so much. And with that being said, if there ain't nothing else, mayor, I'm a commotion we ader.
Thank you, Larry. Need to send it?
Second.
Alrighty. All favors lay out. All folks, thank you, guys. Appreciate you all.